At this time, it is my pleasure and honor to call the September meeting of your Hanover Borough Council to order. And as we all please stand and recite the Pledge of Allegiance in order, and then we will follow that with a brief moment of silence.
The Pledge of Allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which we stand, one nation, under thy, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, and please be seated. Secretary Felix, why don't you call the role of the best borough in Pennsylvania?
Okay. Mr. Fuentes.
Here.
Mrs. Funk?
Here.
Mrs. Greenholt?
Here.
Mr. Greenholt?
Here.
Mr. Heckberg?
Here.
Mr. Cross?
Here.
Mr. Lookenbell?
Here.
Mr. Ricart?
Here.
Mr. Rowland?
Here.
Dr. Rupp?
Here.
Solicitor Schultis?
Here.
Manager Lewis?
Here.
Mayor Whitman?
Here.
Secretary Felix? Junior Counsel Taya Prasad? Libby Houston? We have a quorum.
Thank you. This time, we will open up the floor for public comment. I have three pre-registrations in no particular order, but who will be called first will be Karen Lippi. Karen, please come forward. You're welcome to have a seat at the front table, center chair. Tell us your name and address into the microphone, and then a brief summarization of your hopefully praise, but if not--
Thank you, sir.
Issue.
My name is Karen Lippi. I live at 221 Franklin Street, Hanover, and I wanted to talk to you tonight about the mowing of the grasses at Longarm Reservoir. I wrote a letter, and I have to say that I've been working with Margie. A lot of our issues, I think, have been resolved already, but Margie encouraged me to read this so that you would understand what we've been discussing. So regarding the mowing of grasses at Longarm Reservoir and the proposed addition of a kayak canoe launch at Shepherd Myers Reservoir. Longarm and Shepherd Myers reservoirs are listed as an important bird area in Pennsylvania by the Pennsylvania Ornithological Society. This area received that status after studies were done on the species of birds found here. Grasslands are becoming rare annually during the changing farming practices. This grassland that were there prior to the recent mowing were home to hundreds of nesting birds, among them one that is state endangered, the Dick'sisal, and one that is listed as threatened, the grasshopper sparrow. Many birders and photographers flock to the area to see these uncommon species. Some that were once commonly seen but are now rare are the American kestrel, harriers, and short-eared owls, also a state endangered species. They could have once be found here in the winter. Those birds disappeared as the mowing of the grasses became an annual affair. But this recent mowing was done right in the heart of nesting season for the grassland birds. I and many of my friends had been enjoying photographing the birds. The Dixis was so rare that it was bringing birders from long distances to see and photograph it. The day after the mowing, I visited the area, and I saw many of the birds were no longer singing their songs. They were sounding distress calls as they searched in vain for their nests and chicks. Farming practices have changed in recent years. These birds no longer have an opportunity to nest on private lands. If they can't nest on public land, where can they find a place? The farmer saw those grasses as food for livestock. The borough saw those grasses as an opportunity to raise cash. I saw those grasses as homes for hundreds of birds, food for butterflies and other pollinators, fox turtles, snakes, and rodents. What is left now is an ecological desert. The grasses will grow again, and they have. Will those threatening endangered species return now that the habitat they found here has been destroyed? That is unknown. It appears to me that all of the recent changes at Longarm and Shepherd Myers have been beneficial to fishermen, not so much to wildlife and people like photographers and birders who come here from long distances to enjoy the unique wildlife found here. I was shocked to hear that boating may now be allowed on Shepherd Myers Reservoir. Because of the heavy traffic on Longarm Reservoir, the eagles that nest there claim Shepherd Myers as their territory, too. When boaters and fishermen push them from the trees where they try to rest or attempt to fish from, they go to Shepherd Myers where they can find peace and freedom from human encroachment. If fishing is allowed there, the eagles will lose that protection. Birders and photographers are non-consumptive users of wildlands. We do not seek to use up the resources there. We hope to enjoy them and share their beauty with others. While we are willing to share these areas with others, fishermen, boaters, and hunters, it would be nice that the wildlife could have places where they are not disturbed by those activities so that we could have opportunity to observe and photograph them. Boaters and fishermen have all of Cadorus State Park and now Longarm Reservoir. Is it asking too much to keep the Shepherd Myers area free from boating and to continue to bar trespass on the backside of that small lake? I am a local person who enjoys the beauty of this area. I am proud that others throughout the state also agree that what we have here is pretty special. I plead with you to take into account the special and sensitive species that have also recognized and utilized this unique habitat. Someone else had mentioned something which I didn't think of when I wrote this, and at Cadorus State Park, Eurasian milfoil is an invasive plant that has taken over the lake. By the end of summer, that covers a third of the lake. Most of the boat launches are unable to be used. They can't fish in those areas because the milfoil is so bad. They take that milfoil. It gets on the bottoms of their boats, and they carry it to Longarm. The Fish Commission encourages them to make sure that they clean their motors, that clean their boats, so that they don't spread that plant, because they know how terrible it is for the fish and the aquatic insects. But you do have a problem with it at Longarm Reservoir. At Cadorus, we have had so much development going on around, and everything they feed in those grasses also--
If I could ask you to work towards a conclusion, please.
Yeah, that's my time. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, I'll just say, commenting on your issue briefly, you've raised our attention to a few things we weren't aware of, so--
Well, I think most of the issues we have--
We're working through.
Yes, thank you.
But thank you, yeah, because of you, yes. Next, we have Jen Zerfing. Good evening.
My name is Jennifer Zerfing with Becker Law Group, 529 Carlisle Street in Hanover. Our office recently filed a right-to-know request regarding the contract with the Leppson Research Group for a survey on the rental registration issue, and the borough provided a copy of that contract in response. The contract is signed by Mr. Chris Miller on April 28, 2023, and contains a budget for the project for about $9,000 plus printing, postage, and other potential optional expenses. According to the Borough of Hanover Bid Procurement Contracts and Purchasing Policy that was adopted on September 28, 2022, the Borough Manager has the authority to approve unbudgeted purchases under $5,000. Unbudgeted purchases over $5,000, however, have to be approved by this council. And thus far, we've been unable to determine the authority of the Chief Code Enforcement Officer, Mr. Miller, to enter into contracts on behalf of the borough. So given that the survey was contemplated well after the 2023 budget was established, our clients are concerned that this contract was an unbudgeted expenditure. If it was budgeted, I'm here to ask which expenditure category it came from, and if there's a detailed line item budget for that category that is available to the public, that would be my first question. If the survey was an unbudgeted expenditure, we're concerned that moving forward with this contract and the survey may have violated the Sunshine Act because we were unable to find minutes of any previous meetings, of any vote that approved this more than $9,000 contract with the Leppson Research Group. So we would just like to give council this opportunity in a public forum to provide information on how and when this particular contract was authorized, and to just provide a little bit of transparency on how and when the funds to pay for this survey were authorized.
Manager Lewis, do we have a short answer, or do we need to dig through--
Could I ask, Tim, Solicitor Schultis, please? I'm not familiar with the right-to-know request, this one. Could you speak to this at all, or is it finalized? Have they requested and gotten what they've asked for?
That I'm not sure. There was a right-to-know request, asking for the contract and then asking for the survey itself.
And also, any invoices? However, we were informed that there haven't been any-- we were informed that there haven't been any invoices yet.
Yeah, so I--
That is correct.
Yeah, I can't-- so I can't answer that question.
Then we did receive the information we requested.
Okay.
Okay. So--
Okay, we'll have to research and see. I mean, I am more than willing to own that I was not familiar with procurement policy when I authorized Chris to sign for that.
Sure.
So, but we were directed by council to do the survey, so I'm going to own that.
So you were directed by council?
Yes.
Well, I'll tell you what. You've raised some issues, and we're not going to answer them tonight.
I understand.
We'll get back to you, because we may not know all the particulars at this point, so--
Yeah, but we have your questions, yeah.
Very good. Thank you.
Thank you. Lastly, we have Jill Little.
Jill Little, 208 York Street in Hanover. We moved into 208 in July of 99. The house beside us, the lady had eight dogs and 18 cats. We called the borough to see if there was any kind of restriction on how many animals you could have, and they said no because their mayor, Maggie, she loved animals, and so therefore there was no restriction. There wasn't anything we could do. We called the SPCA. They said as long as they have food, water, and shelter, there isn't anything they could do. We had to put up a privacy fence because her dogs would sit there and bark at us when we were trying to eat our dinner in our kitchen, so we had to construct a privacy fence. She had a fire in one of her receptacles, so we called the fire department. She didn't call them. We called the fire department. Fire department came out, saw what kind of condition the house was in and all the things in there, and they gave her 48 hours to clean it up and get rid of the dead animals. You see, when one of her animals would die, she would wrap it up, put it in a tub, a plastic tub, and seal it up. So all the dead animals were in there. No one ever came back to check and see whether or not she had cleaned up the place. She died in 2019. Smitty found her body after three days of extreme heat. Her brother came to our house with flea bombs. He didn't want to go in, so Smitty dressed in a hazmat suit and a respirator and went in and put out the bombs. After the initial bombing, he went back in without his hazmat suit, and it was attacked by fleas because the bombs didn't kill the eggs. So, you know, it's just-- this house has been horrible ever since we moved in, and we've tried everything to try to get some help. After she died, her niece and nephew came to take out whatever it was they wanted. They were there twice, and they got sick, so they never came back. We talked to the code enforcement officer, not Chris, but the previous one, three times, and they kept telling us that we were on the list. In October 2022, our dishwasher sprung a leak. We pulled it out, and to our horror, found that the hoses had been chewed by rodents, and there was rodent drippings, droppings underneath the dishwasher. We bought mousetraps, set eight mousetraps. Every morning, we'd get up, and the bait would be gone, so we decided maybe we should get bigger traps. So we got bigger traps, and we started catching rats approximately 14 inches long from nose to tail. We had-- I had an appliance rack in my kitchen, three-tier appliance rack, and when the exterminator came, I said, "What is this stuff all over my appliances?" He said, "That's rat urine."
If I could just ask you, I think council's aware of most of this.
Okay.
I'm not sure whether you're telling a story or you're going to ask it for something.
I want to tell you how bad it is, okay?
We have a pretty strong sense, and I believe we're involved with trying to remedy that currently.
I hope so.
Is there--
But the bottom line is, it's got to be cleaned out according to the EPA hazmat, because everybody gets sick, including me, because of what's going on over there. So I just wanted to make sure that it's going to be cleaned out according to the hazmat and the EPA--
Okay.
--regulations.
Okay.
Is that going to happen?
We're working through our process, which there are legalities to that. I believe the solicitor has mentioned some of those. Our personnel just can't go there willy-nilly, nor can this council take upon the expense of tearing down a home or--
Oh, we're not asking you to tear it down.
--redoing something, but we are aware of the issue, and we are working through it.
Well, it's been a year since we contacted Chris about it, so--
How many years did this go on?
This went on for about, well, before she died. It went from 1999, when we first moved in there.
Did you have-- do you have any infestation in your home?
Not at the moment.
You've gotten part of the problem in your home.
We did have, but now we have an exterminator that comes every three months and takes--
And you're paying that out of your pocket?
Yes, I am. Well, the two initial exterminations, the borough reimbursed me for, but now I'm paying for--
Okay, so they were working with you.
Yeah, so now I'm paying for it out of my own pocket, just to make sure that--
You are. Yes, I understand.
We're on top of the problem.
Yes, yes.
Ma'am, we are very aware of the conditions in that property. We have inspected it. All of our personnel were suited with hazmat equipment.
We were there that day.
So, and we are working our way through the court system to get court approval to remedy it.
But you don't know how long that's going to take. I mean, we were told before that, you know, paperwork had been filed with the courts to, you know, resolve the problem, but nothing has ever happened.
Well, it is in the court system, and that takes time. The other issue, obviously, is the owner is no longer with us, so-- So it adds complexity to it, because we don't know who to serve. But we've dealt with all those issues, and we're about to go to a hearing, so--
Did you say we are about to go to a hearing, Tim?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. The only--
But the other complexity of the thing is that there was a tax sale in York County last week. The property was sold.
Right, we know all that.
So that's not going to deter the borough from its enforcement efforts, but it adds another layer of complexity to this case. But hopefully, with a new owner, that might help the situation happen faster, but we'll have to see.
Do you really think that the new owner is going to take on that responsibility?
We can't comment. We're not the new owner, so-- thank you. Is there anyone online with us this evening who'd like to address counsel?
There's a guest, Bea Zoom. You're welcome to unmute yourself if you'd like to speak with counsel.
No one? Okay. We'll close the public comment portion of the meeting.
Bill, can I just say one thing?
Yeah.
This bothers me greatly, and I didn't know that we had a problem until about two, two-and-a-half months ago. I don't think anyone in our council, as we sat here, including our borough manager, would want to undergo what these people have undergone, and it's just not them. We have another family at 210 that has been affected. I would like to see this personally go as fast as we possibly can to aid these people who have undergone this way before I found out about it. And I also personally, as of a representative of the Fifth Ward, would like to be more informed. When we have specific problems like this, and if anyone is listening tonight, they do need to make their representatives also aware, because we will intend to walk with you and not against you. Okay?
Thank you, Counsel Funk.
You're welcome.
At this time, we have a presentation by Downstream Strategies. The floor is yours.
It's my privilege tonight to introduce to you two fantastic people. To my far right is our market master, Curtis Oviot. He's been with us for about a year now. If you haven't met him, I encourage you to do so. He's been working very hard at the market on behalf of the vendors and the market as a whole. Part of what we've been doing has included the other gentleman to my right, Matt Pennington, who is with Downstream Strategies, and they have just completed about a six-month process of a survey on the market, including its facilities, its vendors, its marketability, and I have the privilege of turning the floor on over to Matt here.
Thank you, Valerie. Again, I'm Matt Pennington from Downstream Strategies, and the process started off back in April, where we got to dig in a little bit of what's going on at the Hanover Market. And I put this slide together because after about six months of market assessment and analysis, based on what Valerie had just said, the bottom line are those numbers that are in front of you. About a half a million dollar increase in annual vendor sales, combined with an additional $100,000, roughly $100,000 in additional annual operating revenue at the market itself, if strategies and objectives go as planned, as identified throughout the report that I believe you have all had an advanced copy of. So, next slide, please. So to get there, we pulled four report inputs, gathered data from in-person interviews, from borough staff, as well as market manager, and other folk and other vendors that are currently working or visit the market during the days of operation. Second on that four-report input, we conducted a pretty lengthy public and vendor survey where we had about 687 total public surveys. Those were both 587 of those, 687 were attendees, regular attendees to the market, and 100 were never been. They just clicked on the link and took the survey. Additionally, we had about 24 vendors that answered several different questions on that survey to compile our data points, and those results will be made available to you in an additional appendix forthcoming. Third, we looked at the revenue and management structure that's currently in place at the market house itself, looked at some of your books and where, you know, some of your costs, some of your expenses, and how much you're bringing in from rentals and other activities that might be occurring. And then additionally, we looked at the management structure, how the framework, who's responsible, roles, responsibilities, things along that nature. Then finally, we looked at various case studies in and around the Hanover region. There's a number of different markets in Pennsylvania. One of your more successful ones is Lancaster Public Market, not too far from here, but also researched market houses from around the country to get a handle on what is working in 2023 and beyond for these types of public market houses throughout the country. Next slide, please. Next slide, please. Oh, oh, sorry. Go back to three. I was looking at my own screen.
Thanks.
So we're counting down. Three key findings that we came away with after reviewing the survey data, as well as everything else we just talked about in the report inputs. Mission and purpose. What's the identity of the market itself? Is it a food market? Is it a farmer's market? Is it a craft market? Is it antique market? That's really what we're looking at in terms of what we saw from respondents inside those data points that we talked about earlier. Second in those key findings were roles, responsibility, and authority. Vendors were sometimes not obeying some of the rules that are in place. Some vendors were upset about that, so we had some conflicts within the vendors themselves, inconsistencies on how those rules are enforced. We also saw roles and responsibilities that are spread somewhat unequally and kind of ad hoc throughout either borough staff or market manager staff, sort of left-hand, right-hand scenarios. And then finally, overwhelmingly, everyone wanted to see more customers coming through the door at the Hanover Market. Next slide, please, for real this time. Counting down, two ends of the house really do exist that we looked at. So in the report, you'll see they're framed up in two really objectives. One is the organizational structure of the Borough of Hanover's Market House, and then we looked at case studies from around the country, and most are run by some sort of nonprofit. That's who is operating typically these market houses. In a lot of cases, they're municipally owned. The building and the land are municipally owned, and they, a lot of times, lease them out to a nonprofit for a dollar a year. And then that nonprofit has a bit more agility, can adjust quicker to market demands and market responses, but also they put forth a different set of rules and have a different sort of flair away from the municipal operation. Second, in the organizational structure, leadership, authority. Many of these market houses around the country have full-time market manager staff, at least one full-time equivalent employee. Sometimes there's multiples, and a lot of the most successful ones have specific folks that are dedicated to communications, advertising, marketing. So just looking at the way that your staffing is worked over at the Hanover Market, that's all in the back of the house. The front of the house, on the other hand, that's more public-facing. That's what your customers are going to see. So the marketing of events, the marketing of new vendors, you know, what's for sale at the Hanover Market Houses? Is it what's fresh fruit or vegetable is in season, is being displayed there? There's also a number of different other public-facing ideas contained within that document that I hope you all read and enjoy. And then finally, the one thing, next line, really the one action item for today that I can present to you that really costs no money, doesn't really dedicate any really mission-oriented, is to nominate a market house committee. There seems to be a lot of energy around this market and a lot of popularity within the market itself, but no one really kind of seen that this plan is taking-- no one's taking this plan and implementing some of the strategies and objectives within it. So that is one of my only recommendations for you today, is to take-- to read it and acknowledge that there are people working here for you, and it's a wonderful market, and it was a pleasure working with Valerie and Curtis and all of the vendors throughout this six-month process. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And I just have a little plug to put in. Our 90th anniversary is happening, not this Saturday, but next Saturday, October the 7th, at the Market House. We're having a ribbon cutting for our 90th day to the day of celebration at Chestnut Street, so please come. We'd love to have you there. And thanks again to Matt and his team. They did a great job, and chat with Curtis when you get a chance.
Who would you suggest should make up a market committee?
The recommendations on who would make up the market committee are in the report. It's based, again, off of a case study, I think, from Lancaster, so it's typically would be a market man-- oh, here. Thank you, Valerie. So in the report, we had four municipal representative members, two market management representatives, potentially sitting next to me, who have direct connection to the market and a lot of institutional knowledge there, director of public works, one elected borough representative, making up those municipal reps, and then three market representative members. So two current standholders, two current vendors, and then one former vendor that since is no longer selling at that Hanover Market.
And then the community representatives, too?
Oh, thank you, yes. And then four volunteer representatives. Typically, you would find on a normal board someone that has expertise in marketing, finance, legal, and then where it gets a little different-- And then where it gets a little different would be agriculture and then entrepreneurial development, because this could potentially be a entrepreneur, sort of a hub for folks trying out. Maybe their gardening home will want to sell their wares, or maybe they developed a new type of, you know, apple butter or jam or something that they want to sell. And then finally, someone that knows a bit about nonprofit status if the borough does decide to take that recommendation.
We're going to get that report?
Yes, ma'am. It should be in your agenda packet for today.
I think it's in the digital packet.
Oh, okay.
If you have trouble with it, Carol, let me know.
Digital packet, which is not in front of me.
Thank you.
Very welcome.
Thank you all.
All right, this time, we will move into the regular agenda. First item being the motion to approve the consent agenda, if there is one.
So, motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor of the consent agenda approval signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay. Motion carries. Page two, standing committees. Counselor Rowan, Finance and Personnel.
Yeah, I'd like consideration of a motion to approve the 2024 SPCA agreement and the annual service contract in the amount of $11,700.
So, motion.
Seconded.
Thank you.
All in favor, signify by saying aye, please.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay? Motion carries. We will move into Public Safety Committee. Dr. Rupp?
Thank you, President Ricard. First of all, I would ask for consideration of a motion to approve ordinance number 2343 to eliminate the loading-unloading zone at 304 Broadway.
A motion.
Seconded.
Is there any discussion required? All right, we're going to do a roll call here. Secretary Felix?
Dr. Rupp?
Four.
Mr. Ricard?
Four.
Mr. Greenholt?
Four.
Mr. Kress?
Yes.
Mr. Lookinbill?
Four.
Mr. Fuentes?
Four.
Mr. Hegberg?
Yes.
Mrs. Funk?
Yes.
Mr. Rowland?
Four.
Mrs. Greenholt?
Yes.
Motion passes with 10, 4, and 0 against.
Thank you. Secondly, I'd like to ask for consideration for motion to approve the advertisement of an ordinance amending the park rules to eliminate the allowance of open burning.
So moved.
Seconded.
All in favor of that one, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
And thirdly, I'd ask for consideration for motion to approve the 50% cost sharing with the Hanover Public School District to establish a school zone for the West Hanover Street School in the amount of $4,225 to the borough, with the total cost being $8,450.
So, motion.
Seconded.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
That concludes my report.
Thank you, Dr. Rupp. We're going to segue into Water Resources. Counselor Kress?
Number one, consideration of a motion to approve execution of a dispute agreement and payment of change order number six to KC Construction Services for Shepherd and Myers Dam Project in the amount of $44,191.72 for sluice gates and gate valves only.
So, motion.
Any discussion? Seeing none, I'll call the question. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Number two, consideration of a motion to approve the execution of a water main extension agreement for the Eagle Rock Development at Centennial Road and Route 116.
So moved. Discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
I am.
I am as well. So, we have all ayes and two nays?
Yep.
Motion carries.
Number three, consideration of a motion to approve the engagement of Gannett Fleming Consultants for the development of a safe yield study in the amount not to exceed $50,580 and a drought contingency plan in the amount not to exceed $30,120 to also include an evaluation of surplus capacity and development of operational data tracking tools.
So moved. Second. Everyone understands it?
One question. Get me back to the safe yield study. Yeah. The study is regarding?
Regarding what capacity our system will have in certain situations.
Thank you.
Yeah, so we can.
Yeah, I just needed that little bit of.
So, we can make those decisions with better information.
Yeah. Okay. Anyone else question? I have the motion. Did I get a second?
Second.
Okay. Seconded. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. We'll move you into Public Works and Facilities, Counselor Kress?
Number one, consideration of a motion to approve resolution number 1378 for applications for funding through the local share account, LSA, category four grant program not to exceed $300,000 and to authorize execution of related letters of support for the purchase of code and police vehicles with no matching funds required.
Motion.
Seconded.
All in favor of that one, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay? Motion carries.
Number two, consideration of a motion to approve resolution number 1379 for applications for funding through the Keystone Recreation Park and Conservation Fund Grant for the public library facility program not to exceed $500,000 with 50% cash match and to authorize execution of related letters of support for library HVAC system improvements.
Second.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Yes, I am.
Yes, I have some questions about that. Can I ask or go away?
Hang on.
Okay.
How many nays do I have? One, two.
You have me.
Three. And the rest are yays?
Mrs. Funk, Mrs. Greenholt, and who else?
Do I have any nasal or extensions on this side? Okay, the motion does pass, but go ahead and ask your question.
Excuse me, who was the third?
Mr. Greenholt.
Greenholt, Greenholt, and.
Okay, thank you.
Your question?
I just wondered, is it, is it, I guess this is for AJ. Is the actual cost half a million dollars?
That's the estimated cost at this time. The true estimation is not finished. That's the estimated cost. If the borough were to receive this grant, we would pay 50% match $250,000 to receive the $500,000.
What happens if the cost is only, they can fix it for $300,000?
Still 50/50.
So, it's still 50/50. Were there any other estimates?
It's not, it's not to exceed.
Okay.
This is just the initial to apply for the grant. And as we mentioned when we brought this forth last week, it's time-sensitive to be in for this grant. Otherwise, what we are looking at, because we are responsible for the building, if we have an emergency repair, then the borough would be on the hook for the entire $500,000 or the actual cost of the replacement.
I just had to get it wrapped, my head wrapped around that.
Sure, sure. And we went through rather quickly last week with all the things on the agenda. And I didn't, I wasn't clear enough in my explanation there. So, yes, we would be responsible for the repair one way or another. This would allow us to have at least half of the repair covered through this grant.
But it could go to a larger amount. In other words.
It could go larger, it could go smaller. Right now, it's looking in the ballpark of $500,000.
So, we're, okay, so it's an estimate of what? And it could, if it, okay, but it could go larger than $500,000, and the borough would still have to add that extra to it?
It could. This is not to exceed that amount. So, the borough would not exceed the $250,000 with this application. So, if we got to that point, then those funds, if the borough were to continue to move through the process, then yes, the borough would use general fund monies to cover that over.
The excess.
Correct.
And I'm just wondering if there's, we're getting more than one estimate from one company?
Well, we have to.
So, correct.
I just need to know that.
All this, all this is, is a ballpark. So, that we can't apply for this grant without giving them some reasoning of what the amount we're applying for is.
Okay.
So, we need one initial. To get multiple at this time would not allow us to meet the deadline for this grant.
So, we haven't committed to any?
No, 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 no.
Yeah, I just needed to know that.
That's one thing I did stress last time. This does not bind you to anything.
Thank you. That's, then I'm all right.
We're trying to get it.
Okay. Yeah, I saw the word application, but I need to understand.
Okay, you're trying to get $250,000 of a $500,000, what you'd call grant, and we have to use matching funds.
Right.
So, if upon receiving that $250,000, we will match it. But if there is an excess amount that goes over whatever it is from whatever contractor, we will take from general funds. Is that correct?
That's one of the possibilities. There's also a possibility of other grants being available. Once we have the true cost out there, that will open up some other doors to us.
If we should get that grant, and we are finding out that the cost exceeds or super exceeds what we are looking at in order to take care of this particular problem, would we, would grants be available? Or do you apply, when you apply for this $250,000 grant, which I prefer to look at it that way, when we match the funds?
Sure.
Have you, in the same time period, gone after other grants that you know are available? Or do you not have that information for us at this time?
Correct, we do not. This was brought to our attention by Delta, that we have hired to look for these kind of grants. And that's why I mentioned it was time-sensitive. It is due at the end of this month. So, we had to hustle to get one through, and we don't want to be caught with that system totally failing and then the borough being on the hook for the entire cost of the system.
And we're sure that that system is about to fail.
Yes, it's original to destruction.
Because you're having problems with it.
Correct.
I will tell you what. I would be willing to change my vote.
It's already passed, so.
Oh, it's already, you already accepted it. It's done.
Yep.
Dead deal.
Yep, so we're trying to.
Then I stick right with it, okay?
All right.
But I am hoping that we take as much burden off of our council and our people of Hanover to get more grants that are, we can only match so much.
Sure.
And after we finish matching, we keep pulling it out of our coffer. But eventually, if we had, I would like us to try to get grants that are non-matching.
Sure.
Because our people cannot afford this.
Right, we would all like that. And those, you know, those you potentially chase over, things that are projects or things that, you know, you would like to do. This is a need-to-do function. And there's very few grants that don't have matching that are a need-to-do function. So, regular day-to-day operations.
You're saying?
Correct.
In this particular area of grant giving?
Yes.
Can you explain why they don't?
Well, they don't want to fund your day-to-day operation totally. So, typically, a.
Thank you.
They want skin in the game.
I like that term. I use that all the time, don't I?
That's why I used it.
Okay.
All right, thank you, Mr. Grimm.
Thank you.
And just so everyone remembers, we are currently in the process of changing Manager Lewis's middle name to Grant.
It's Valerie's to write it.
Margie Grant.
Margie Grant Lewis, so as to.
MGL.
Yes. But we have a, we have a pretty good track record of being aggressive with grants around here. Madam Mayor, have a report. You're up.
These are my August highlights. August 1st, I attended National Night Out, which was held at Emory Markle Middle School. There was lots of interaction with families and the police, fire, emergency services, local and state government officials at this popular community event. There were many fun, interactive activities for children from spraying a fire hose to digging for bones at the York County Coroner's Booth. The night ended, once again, with the favorite bicycle raffle. August 9th, it was my honor to partake in the 50th Anniversary Celebration of Jean Latta Ford by presenting a proclamation to this dealership that originated in the Hanover Borough. The Hanover Chamber of Commerce, Adams County Chamber, and executives from Ford Automotive were also in attendance. This three-generation business has contributed a multitude of community service for the Hanover area, and we wish them many more years of success. I have also been fortunate to have Jean and Sheila Latta as my neighbors for 20 years. August 11th, I performed the annual swearing-in of the Hanover Public Crossing Guards and School Administrators. Afterwards, Chief Martin went over safety guidelines, answered questions, and discussed concerns of the Crossing Guards, wishing all a safe school year. Later that day, the awesome Hanover community and businesses showed their support to help raise money and awareness to end domestic violence by participating in the 11th Annual Walk a Mile in Herschus, held by the YWCA and Safe Home. Always an amusing event, seeing the creativity and spirit of the teams and watching the men hobbling around in heels. Happy to report, all made it back alive. There was only one man down, because they actually do walk a mile. August 25th, Borough Manager Margie Lewis and Public Works Director AJ Grimm and I met with YMCA staff and three interested community members to discuss a potential dog park that would be located on YMCA property. August 30th, I had the pleasure of joining Hanover Auto Team and the Hanover Area Chamber of Commerce for a ribbon cutting to celebrate the opening of its new Tech Pathways Training Center. Tech Pathways offers education and hands-on training to high school students to develop skills to begin a career working in the automotive industry as fully-certified technicians upon graduation. This is a wonderful asset for the community. Meetings throughout the month included a borough meeting with county commissioners for a new emergency management facility, chili cook-off organizational meeting, special stormwater presentation, Dewberry Consulting for downtown enhancement plans, and the 250th Celebration Committee. This concludes my report.
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
She's busy.
Is there?
You're a busy girl.
I think we have a public announcement. Dr. Rupp? Yeah, you're up.
I don't know how many of you read the borough news that comes. Sometimes, sometimes it's good, sometimes it's not. Sometimes it's good stuff in there, it's applicable. The very last page, they have a Hanover Borough more than just snacks. It's a very nice article with the Hanover Borough, and they specifically say, come for snacks, but you can also come for beer and all kinds, and food, and art, and entomoral spirit. Says there are many things to do when you visit the area. So, it's a very nice article about Hanover, highlighted the rest of Pennsylvania, so maybe we'll get more people to come.
Can we reference that on our web page? Or is that legal, or how does that work?
Sure.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll open it up for one final round of public comment. Anyone in the room, sir, come forward. Name, address, and nature of your business.
My name is Martin Smith Jr. I live at 208 York Street. I understand what you folks said, but I've got a couple of questions for you all. How many of you all sitting behind them tables have to live by a house that was rat-infested, that chewed through the walls into my house? Now, how many of you have to go home tonight, pull in your driveway, walk up your walkway, and smell what's coming from that house? I've had to do that for 24 years. I have come to this code enforcement place that I was hoping to get results. The only thing I got was lies. Now, nobody here, none of you, consider the health and welfare of Miss Jill and my health. And why is it taking so long? Are we going to have to live there again another year until that place is cleaned out? And we got to live there? I'm fed up with it. I'm sorry. I'm up to here. Now, any one of you live by a house where the rats got so damn big that they chewed through the wall, threw through the window, and come over? We don't know how many that have died in our house, under the floors and stuff, and we smell the stuff. None of you. She had to go to the hospital for four days. And you found out she had over 100 and some blood clots in her lungs. And they think it came from the urine and the waste of those rats, because it was right after that. Now, how are you all going to go home tonight and sleep? You're going to go home and put your head down on that pillow? Ain't got a damn thing to worry about, do you? Do you? Any of you?
I promise you, sir, we all.
I don't want no promises, no more.
We, we all.
I know what you're saying.
We understand what you're going through.
No, you don't.
And we, we do. I do, personally. I've been through what you're talking about.
Have you smelled, what would I have to smell?
I, I understand what you're saying. What I'm saying is, right now, our hands are tied because of the court. But we do care. We have...
What's wrong with the Pennsylvania State Health Department coming in and stepping in and helping us? We called them. "Oh, no, we can't do nothing for you." What is the Pennsylvania State Health Department for?
Again, we're doing everything we can right now.
Well, they don't report to us, I don't, I don't know what to tell you.
I don't want, I know what you're saying. You are helping. Chris Miller has been the only one in this Hanover Borough office that has ever stopped the time and take to talk to me. The only reason he did, because I came in here one day, because I went home and found a little lady in our living room calling, because she can't get ready for Thanksgiving? She can't get ready for Christmas? No, no more. And I told him right to his face. I said, "We're going to have something done." I said, "Because if you don't, I will." And he said right away, "Oh, no, we can't have this conversation." I said, "Oh, yes, we are." I said, "I don't give a damn if you're taping it, or everybody in the building hears it." Now, that's been a year ago. How long do I, and Miss Jill have to live there with this? We've been there 24 damn years. We've came to the borough wanting to know what we can do, and you all never even answered. When the fire chief, when the fire company was out there at the house, they was ready to condemn it that day. But they gave the lady 48 hours. Nobody came back to check. So, then after she died, I came in, kept coming back in. "Well, we're working on it." Now, what I want to know is, when I come back in here for anything other than that house, if you're saying you're working on it, and I come back in again, and it says the same thing, who can I go to? That's what I want to know, who?
We owe him that. We owe him that. Every council member that sits here tonight, Ed, you're in my fifth ward, he's owed that. He is owed information of where to go, and we can do more to help him. Everything is a legal tied-up excuse.
Give it to him. Give him the information.
You can get it. I, look, I don't, I don't, you don't give me that information.
No, I'm sorry, I don't have it.
I was not, no, and I wasn't informed that there was a problem, except for two and a half months ago, and I'm trying to help this man. He's coming here for the help.
Get him the information he's asking for.
You get the information bill from, from our borough, our borough should have that information bill. Should they not? Should they not? I wouldn't know about it, because I don't have a rat problem, but he does.
That's why I went to the PA State Health Department. What are they for? They're useless.
We, we can't answer for them. We can only answer for us.
Well, you're throwing me under the bus and the rest of us.
Which is hard enough. I'm not throwing you under the bus.
Well, look...
Why did you throw me under a bus? I'm trying to help this man, and I even did phone calls. The rest of you did not know, except for two and a half months ago. I was kept in the dark all this time.
Did any of you ever see the pictures that Chris Miller took, the videos?
I, I've seen pictures. I think most of council has.
Did, did any of you?
I certainly have.
Did you?
No.
Did any of you down there?
Nope.
I didn't.
Well, let me tell you, you open the back door, and you walk in, and as soon as you walk in, there's cat shit and dog shit laying right there. Then you walk in further, and it's four. It's all through the house. Now, she's been going four years, and nobody wants to do a damn thing about it. And I know what you're saying, you're working on it. How long longer is it going to be working on? Is it going to be another year?
There's, there's a difference, sir, I'm afraid, and you might not like hearing this, between what you want us to do and what we can do.
It ain't what I want you to do, it's what I'm asking you to do.
Well, what you're, I'm assuming you're asking us to do something that you'd like.
But soon as possible. I've lived there 24 years.
What we're being told is that we are in the process of legally trying to remedy and help in this situation. But we're at the mercy of the court that we are applying for the ability to be able to do that.
Has anybody told the court the situation, that there's people living right there?
I, I don't know if you can reach them, but they're not necessarily interested in, in that. Sorry, but that's...
Who ain't interested in it?
Potentially the court, but we can't speak for them either.
How the house is, or what we got to live by? They're not, they're not interested in that?
Let the solicitor address the court aspect of this.
Okay, so, in, in response to your complaints, Mr. Smith...
See, you sit there and smile, you think it's funny. No, it ain't funny. I had somebody else do the same thing. Sit there and laugh at me.
Mr. Smith, I'm not laughing at you. I'm, I'm actually working on the problem to help the situation. So, I'm going to tell you what we've done, okay? If that's helpful to you.
Yes.
Well, the first thing is, why was it ever put up for sale? When the code enforcement, Chris Miller, knew how bad the situation was, and he, he told me, he talked to the two lawyers, so I'm saying, you're one of them, I guess. And you said, "Don't worry about it. Ain't nobody going to buy it." And then turn around, and somebody bought it. And then that just throws me way back at the end of the start again.
Okay, so, let me go back and tell you what we've done, and where we are in the process.
I know what you've done. I want to know how long it's going to take to get it done.
Well, I don't know if I can give you that answer, except that, because there's a new owner, right?
Well, how can somebody own it when it's a hazmat house? How did it go up on the auction block?
It, it went up for, on an auction block because of back taxes. The borough had nothing to do with that process. It's the county. So, we filed...
You say the borough don't have nothing to do with?
And we don't.
No, they didn't know anything about it, Mr. Smith. They really didn't.
Hold on, we did know about it.
Well, how did you know about it, Tim?
We, we knew that there was a tax upset sale, and this property was on, on the list to be sold. So, that's, that's not our doing.
But nobody wanted to stand up and tell them about the place, that it shouldn't be sold because of...
Yeah, that has, that has nothing to do with that sale. So, it really doesn't.
I swear. I just, I don't believe it. I really don't. If I wanted to sell a house like that, you all would step in and stop it. I know you would.
Yeah.
I think he's just hoping to get it cleaned up, like as soon as the court says that, hey, there's...
I'm not waiting another year. I'll put it to you this way, the only thing...
I can't even, you know, I'd like to answer you.
This month or next month.
The only thing I wanted was you all to come in and clean out the damn kitchen, get the food out of the house, to keep the rats from coming back in. That's all I wanted done. But no, can't do it.
But we need...
I ain't waiting another year.
Sir, we need court approval to do it.
Now, everyone here is going to hear this, and I mean it. I'll put on a suit, and I'll clean the damn kitchen out, and I'm going to throw it out in New York, to keep the rats from coming back over into my house. Now, if you all want to stop me, come on down, stop me. But I ain't waiting another year. I've been there 24 years, and I've tried to get this done, and nobody, nobody wants to hear me. But you're hearing me tonight.
Tim, I think the problem that I have legally, is did the courts have the right to sell that hazmat condition without, I know people can bid, and it's sight on scene, Tim, correct? Sight on scene. And somehow, they wanted their money, okay? Now, we were working on it, Chris was working on it, but I had no idea that it sold on the 21st. That's what upset me. And that you were left in a position that you could do nothing. That's what is upsetting me.
And the next question is, okay, then people that bought a place, okay, we want it, we're going to do it. Now, are you all going to stand behind them, to say you have to have a licensed contractor come in, because it's a hazmat, before you even go in the house?
That's a good question. I, I don't have the answer to it, but I think that's a very good question.
My theory is this, I ain't letting nobody in that house.
Right.
I'm, I'm looking out for their welfare.
Right.
Now, I've been in that house, and I know, it ain't, it ain't fit for nobody to walk in. That's what Chris had, had to dress up as.
Right.
But to bring that hazmat stuff out of that house, I want it under control. I don't want it to spread. I've, I've done breeds enough of it.
Yeah.
Twenty-four years worth.
Scott, you went through that house at one point when, after she died, did you not?
Years, years ago. It's a mess. It's, you know, spot on. It, it's a mess, but I don't own it. Um, I have no authority over it. It's, I don't know, it's owned by the bank and whatever. I don't understand exactly how it all works.
Right.
But I'm not going to, I don't claim to be a lawyer.
Right, but chucking for me, right, chucking for me, then I have no rights either. None of us do. Then, what does this man do? This is what I'm trying to find, because we have a heart.
What this solicitor's trying to say is that we are in a legal process.
I know you are.
And what I, my comment before, we may not be doing it at the speed, I didn't say this before, but we may not be doing what you want, but we're doing what we can.
So, what about our health and welfare?
Sir, I, we, we all feel for you, but do you understand that we are elected to sit here and uphold the laws? And in essence, if we were to do what you're asking us to do, what you want us to do, would be to violate a portion of the law that we are sworn to uphold.
For example, we just...
And that's the difficult part.
So, you're, you're, you're saying that...
That's, that's, that's our conundrum. That's, that's our difficult part.
You're invading my law, because you can't clean it up because of a health reason?
Sure, that's your interpretation, but it's my, not my intention to...
Not when she gets sick and has to...
Not my intention to invade anything of yours, nor I don't believe anyone on council has that intention.
And we do hear you. We do hear you. We're all going to think about this when we, we lay down and put our heads on the, we're probably going to be awake thinking about it.
What happened to the other code official officers that I talked to? Every time I come in, "Oh, we're working on it, we're working on it." And that's where I'm bringing up the situation of, who do I go to, when I'm told, "We're just working on it," and not a damn thing was done?
You can, you can keep coming to ask borough staff, and if you don't get answers to questions that we can answer, bear in mind, bear in mind, there's what you want and what we can do.
Well, now, this was prior to any of this is happening now. That's what I'm asking.
I, I, well, one of my questions of you is, you've lived there 24 years, and you say this has been a problem for 24 years. Or, it's, you didn't say this, but you did say that.
Yes, sir.
Have you been bringing this complaint to this building for 24 years?
We called the borough office to ask, "Is there a animal regulations in the borough of Hanover?" We was told, "No."
Well, that's a question, sir, not a complaint.
Have how many animals you want, no matter what.
Yeah.
And then we called the SPCA. Then we came in about the stench. Nothing's been done. The lady's been dead four years.
They went in their house at my district, the lady had...
Tim, is there information that we can give to him legally to pursue?
I don't think we've been working on it for four years, at least to my knowledge.
Well, you should have been, because I was in here the year right when she died, to get it cleaned out.
Yeah.
And the other two, or whatever you had, code of enforcement, officially, yeah, whatever.
Enforcement.
I'd come back in, "Oh, we're working on it."
Yeah.
I'd come back in, two months later, "We're, we're still working on it."
How many years did this go, Mr. Smith, that you were given that type of an excuse?
Well, she died in 19, 2019.
Yep, and before that, though, when we first moved in.
Before that, did you contact about...
Yeah, well, nineteen, just say 2000, because we moved in in 1999.
Okay.
So, she was there six months prior to us. So, once we got the stench and stuff, and realized nobody was going to help us, then we started to put the fence up, because we sat in our dining room, or kitchen, the damn dogs was sitting right out there, and looked in the door, and started barking, 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 while we sat in there at our table, tried to eat. And then the stench got so bad, that we had to side up, side of the house.
Right.
We covered up windows and doors, so the stench wouldn't come in, because we couldn't eat in our dining room.
Right.
Couldn't even sit down.
So, what you did was, you tried to remedy the situation on your own, along with contacting past employees of the borough.
Yes.
Which said they were working on it, but it never went basically any further.
Nope.
And now you have...
And that was from the time we moved in?
Yep.
From the time you moved in, you were talking to the borough?
Our apologies for the time it's taken on our part, sincerely, sincerely. What I can tell you, that council will be diligent in, is that you are communicated with going forward. But I need you to hear what's been said to you several times, that we are a little bit, hands are tied here. So, as far as him saying, "Working on it," it probably...
No, it wasn't.
What I think he meant is that we're at that point where maybe we can't do anymore until we get that legal response.
When I talked to Chris Miller, he didn't know nothing about it. When he, he didn't know nothing until I walked in there that day.
He's speaking about prior to Chris.
Oh, okay, 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 yeah. Oh, now it makes sense, yeah. Okay. Well, Chris is, I can tell you, Chris has spoken to us. Chris is on it.
I have nothing bad to say about Chris.
Okay, okay.
He's helped me, he's been the only one that has talked to me.
So, so, because of Chris, his involvement with you, with the situation, he has brought to council's attention. Council has, we are following through our solicitor, the legal process, that we can work, continue to work our way through, and I promise you that we will get you an answer when we get to the end of the legal process, as far as what we can do next.
Boy, it just sent me back to the very beginning, when they sold the house.
I, I don't know how that complicates it, but it doesn't.
It's still the same, "Who's going to clean it out?"
Margie, are there names where we can send, are there, are there places, like the DEP or wherever, to send him to try to get answers for this, if we can't move that rapidly for him, when our hands are tied? Is there ways we can get information to him, to be able to go, continue further?
I think simply, the borough, the sale of the property will not alter the borough's plans to remedy this situation.
Correct.
Okay, but if he wants to pursue it independently, do we have any information of where he can go?
We could call Kate Clunk?
I don't want to do it.
Very good. Did you get ahold of Kate Clunk?
Yes, I did. And she told us that it's a URO problem. She couldn't get it involved.
You were sent back to the borough? Okay.
So, like you say, my main concern now is, who's going to walk into that house and clean it out? Is it going to be some willy-nilly people?
No.
Or is it going to be a nice...
Not if we do it, not if we do it, sir, but you know, it, it is owned by someone who's not us. Just like if you own your home, and you wanted to do something in it, we're not going to come and do it.
Right.
And you can pick willy-nilly, or you can pick Joe Schmo, or you can pick Jimmy Buck.
Now, I'm talking hazmat.
They're all hazmat companies.
No, no, I mean, you all.
If we're, if we do it, if we send people in there, they are going to be safe, and they're going to be protected, and they're going to be professional.
But if you don't...
If we don't.
Right. If you take...
If someone else does, we can't necessarily control who they use. Just like, for example, I can't pick who paints your house.
So, in other words, anybody can come in, if you all just sell it to them people.
We're not selling it. We don't own it. We're not selling it. We don't own it. Someone, there is an owner of it.
But it's got signs all over the doors, and we did that.
Oh, that don't mean nothing. They may, that don't mean nothing.
Understood, but we're making every, we're doing everything we can. The minute this came in front of us all, we acted immediately, within our legal right, I mean...
It just, it takes time, unfortunately.
But nobody's telling the right people, the judges and stuff, how bad it is. They're, they're not saying, "This is a very bad health issue for the people that live beside," are they? Are you telling the judges?
We absolutely will tell the judge when we...
You will?
When we, when we're in front of the judge.
See? That should have been the very first thing when you took the pictures and the videos.
Sir, we have to go through a process. We don't own the house.
Alright, I'm done. Just like I say, you all go home to your nice homes, and clean there, and goodbye.
Any other public comment in the room? On line?
You're on Zoom, you can address council by unmuted.
Seeing none, I'll close public comment and request a motion to adjourn. Second? All in favor of adjournment, signify with a "aye."
Aye.
Close. See you next month.